Okay, welcome everybody. Today is August 27th, 2020. This is the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anybody else is recording the meeting, please let us know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, and then you get into conference ID number 483-959-41, and then hit the pound. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. We'll begin with a roll call of all the board members. I'll start with myself. I am Davis, David S. Nixon. Uh, Dave Veach?
Uh, David Veach, present.
Paul?
Paul Sample, present.
Uh, I do not believe Happy is with us. Happy, you there? No? Okay. Uh, then, uh, let's see. Buck?
James M. Upson, present.
All right. Dennis?
Uh, Dennis Sullivan, present.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson is present.
Okay. Also, uh, Megan, uh...
Megan is actually with us, David.
Oh, all right. Hi, Megan. Please, uh, please check in in the roll call.
No, you're muted. Megan? Sorry. It takes a minute to unmute. Megan's story is present.
Okay, very good. Uh, anybody that's listening today and wishes to participate, uh, we need to get your name when you go online, or on live, I should say, and the last four digits of your phone number for identification purposes. I want to dispense with the business about how the meeting is conducted, because I guess we're only going to have two, uh, appeals today, so there's no sense in doing that. So, we will begin by, I'll introduce Sarah Clark. Sarah is the PPO, that is the Principal Permitting Officer for the Town of Chatham. She also is the Executive Secretary for the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, let's begin, uh, Sarah, with application number 20-046.
Application number 20-046, Giorgia Evans Family Trust, care of Thad Eldridge, 1038 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at Two Pond View Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map 11D Block 31 Lot 4. The applicant proposes to construct detached garage with a second-floor accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on a non-conforming lot which requires the grant of a special permit. The law is non-conforming in that it contains 13,463 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
We received a note, uh, actually, it's a letter. It is dated August 26, 2020. It is from East Southeast LLC, which is Thad Eldridge's business. He writes, "Dear board members, on behalf of my client Gerald Evans, I request that the public hearing on the application for the above property," and here we're talking about Two Pond View Lane, "scheduled for August 27th to be continued to your next regular meeting. Thank you for your attention too, in consideration of this request." Thad, are you there?
Uh, I do not see Thad in attendance, Mr. Nixon. Um, however, our next meeting would be September 10th, and I don't believe that they will be, um, we only have three items on that agenda, but I don't know if they'll have been heard by the Board of Health at that point. So, if we go with his request, we can continue to the 10th, otherwise, um, it would be the 24th of September.
Well, I think we should do the 24th, because the reason it's being held up and not heard today has to do with the Board of Health. So, I think they need to have had that meeting before we continue.
Okay.
So, um, with that, uh, is there any discussion or any questions from anybody?
This is, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to grant the continuance to September 24th.
Okay.
David Veach, seconds.
Okay. So, Dennis, you'll be the voter today in the absence of Happy. So, we'll start with you, Dennis, uh, if that's okay with you?
I vote to continue the, till September 24th.
Okay. Paul?
Yes, Sample votes yes.
Dave Veach?
Veach votes yes.
Buck?
Upson votes yes.
And Dave Nixon also votes yes. That's a unanimous vote. Okay. On to our next issue, and so that would be application number 20-044.
Application number 20-044, Richard Maureen Carlson, care of David Little, P.O. Box 439, South Orleans, Mass. 02662. Owners of property located at 129 Harding's Beach Line, Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map 9C Block 37 Lot 10. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance for the bulkhead exceeding 30 square feet located 11.33 feet from the southerly butter, southeastern butter, where a 15-foot setback is required. The law is non-conforming in that it contains 18,292 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section 8D 2C of the Protective Bylaw.
Dave, David Little, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, could you please explain to us, uh, why this is necessary?
So, um, we helped the homeowner go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, a couple of years ago for the construction of a new dwelling on a non-conforming lot. The proposed dwelling, uh, conformed with all the zoning dimensional requirements, um, and it, as such, and it was just before the zoning board because it was on a non-conforming lot. When we did the certified plot plan for the construction of the foundation and provided that to the town, it did show the location of the concrete bulkhead, um, but not until we showed the certified plot plan of the finished construction of the dwelling for the purposes of a certificate, certificate of occupancy, did the building inspector bring up the fact that the bulkhead was in fact non-conforming. So, the situation was created, um, by the client and writer in Wilcox, and essentially, we did not interpret the definition of projections correctly in the zoning bylaw. Um, we interpreted, interpreted it to say that projections cannot exceed 30 square feet. Um, this projection, um, extends into the setback 15 square feet. So, we were under the impression what we were doing was in accordance with the zoning bylaw, but we have since learned that we were not interpreting it correctly. And so, we are now here before the zoning board to address the need for a variance, because, um, there is, there is no other route for us to follow other than remove the existing bulkhead and construct a new bulkhead. So, I did provide you a project narrative, and then as late as today, a, a letter, which, um, I'm not going to get into the details of, but the situation is, had this bulkhead been 30 square feet in size and not 34 square feet as it is now, it would have complied with the zoning bylaw. So, so that being said, it, it was an honest mistake. I, I can, I'm going to try and address the variance criteria. Well, it, it, um, from my perspective and probably your perspectives, it may be weak, but the circumstances of this variance request, um, are owing to the fact that it is, it is a triangular-shaped lot, and the owner was trying to make use of the property as best he could. And in addition to that, a little, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve a substantial financial hardship to the applicant. Um, we have contacted contractors and learned the cost to excavate and remove the existing poured concrete bulkhead would be approximately $3,000, and the cost to pour a new bulkhead would be approximately $2,000. So, there, there is a financial hardship associated with this, so that, that would be my presentation as to addressing the hardship criteria. The only other avenue open to the applicant would be to request that the zoning board find the four-square-foot non-conformity de minimis. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I will open myself up to questions from, from you and the zoning board.
Okay. Um, thank you, David. Uh, first of all, I'll see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this. Is there anyone out there at all, Sarah, that you know of?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Riley, yes.
Uh, this is, uh, I believe this variance should be granted. Uh, we're talking about four square feet, and, uh, you know, a minor misunderstanding regarding, uh, how projections are estimated where the bylaw clearly says you can have 30 square feet in the setback, and this only has 15 square feet in the setback. So, I understand why, uh, David and his contractor thought it was one interpretation, and I'm not entirely clear why Jay's interpretation is different, but Jay is the law. So, uh, in any event, I believe it should be granted.
Well, thank you, Mr. Riley. Have you ever met a variance you didn't like, Mr. Riley?
Yes, uh, sometimes I have clients who oppose variances, and I don't like those.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Now, I will, uh, hearing, um, no one else out there, I don't think, uh, is that true, Sarah? Anybody else out there?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised or waving at me, so I, I believe we're okay to proceed.
Okay. I will read the correspondence. Uh, this is dated, uh, August 21st. It's from Judith Giorgio, uh, from the Board of Health. They write, uh, she writes, "I have no concerns regarding the dimensional variance for the bulkhead at this property." Okay. Is there anyone out there that wishes to speak against this or has a specific question?
There are none.
Okay. Uh, questions from the board of David. So, let's start with Paul.
Uh, this is Paul Sample. Uh, my only question that I wasn't clear on is that the plan that we had approved did not show the bulkhead going into the setback at all. Um, so I'm a little confused as to why, uh, the interpretation necessarily comes into it. If, if the plan was, am I correct in thinking that if the plan was followed, there wouldn't be any, uh, any protrusion of the bulkhead into the setback?
Yes, that is, that is correct, Paul. The, one of our, well, we worked with the client, and the client during the process of staking out the house felt he found a more favorable location, which is what appears before you today. But, yes, you were, you were absolutely right. Had we followed the plan that was approved by the zoning board, we wouldn't be here today.
Okay. Um, well, that was the only question I had.
Dave Veach?
Um, yes. I, um, Dave, I just, I did a little, um, research on this, and it looks like, um, you know, I was looking at the, at the Bilco website, and, um, you know, they have a couple of different options for, for, they, they have, the, the bulkhead itself is, is certainly meets the, is under the 30 square feet, um, that would, and so that would be, uh, would not be a problem, but it's the, the concrete, um, around it, the area, area well, that really, that, that has the extra four square feet. Uh, is, is that, that's correct?
Yeah, yes, that is correct, David.
Yeah. And I see, I mean, it's really the difference between, so, and I looked in, in Bilco, and they, they, you know, for this size bulkhead, uh, they specify inside dimensions for, uh, for the area way. And, um, uh, if, if you followed their inside dimensions but used six inches of concrete around it, you would still meet, it'd still be under the 30 square feet. But because these were eight-inch pores of concrete, that extra two inches around the perimeter of the bulkhead is what, is really the difference we're talking about between 30 and 34 square feet.
Uh, yes, close, close to it, yes.
Okay. Great. That's all I, thanks, Dave.
Buck?
I have no questions.
Okay. Dennis?
No, I have no questions.
Dave Thompson?
I have no questions either.
And Megan?
I have no questions either.
And I have no questions. Okay. Uh, Paul?
I'll, I'll move to close, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Okay.
David Veach, seconds.
Okay. Uh, the voters, Dennis, how do you vote?
I vote affirmative, yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Dave Veach?
Veach votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Deliberations. Uh, let's start with Paul.
Uh, this is Paul Sample. I, uh, I think, given the circumstances that we're dealing with, uh, it's appropriate to grant some relief here, and the only question in my mind is whether a de minimis, uh, finding is better than, uh, trying to go with a variance route. Um, so I'll toss that out for consideration by the members of the board.
Okay. But, Dave Veach?
Um, well, I'm, I'm, uh, in favor of granting, um, the variance on this, given the circumstances, uh, um, I'm not sure I can either, I could, I would support it either way, either finding it being de minimis, de minimis, or, um, support it as meeting the criteria, uh, for a variance in my judgment.
Buck?
So, I, so I support the, uh, granting the relief, and I would go along with the wiser members of the commission, um, on which, which way to file.
Okay. Dennis?
Um, Dennis Sullivan, I would, I would vote to, um, affirmatively on the de minimis, procedure. I think based on Dave Veach's comments, um, it makes sense to, to do it that way.
Megan?
If I were voting, I would go with the de minimis option just for, you know, not to create any future issues.
Dave Thompson?
Um, I would, I would, uh, vote in favor also, it's just this little bit of, uh, human error.
Okay. Uh, and this is Dave Nixon. Um, yeah, I would, I would vote for the variance in this case. I, I honestly, uh, am not a fan of calling something like this de minimis. Uh, we've had situations in the past where we're dealing with inches here, there, and stuff, so I really think that we should vote the variance, and that's it. Um, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Share, this is Sarah Clark. Um, I do believe that you need to vote on the application before you, which is the variance, um, and you need to look at the variance criteria.
Okay. Very good. Okay. So, uh, I think that settles that. So, uh, Paul, I think, uh, we need to, um, go to the vote, and, uh, motion, please?
All right. This is Paul Sample. Uh, I would, uh, vote to grant the variance. I think that the hardship has been shown, and the configuration of the lot is unusual in that location, so I would vote in favor of, uh, of that, uh, variance, uh, dimensional variance under these circumstances.
Okay. Dave Veach?
Yeah, I, in my second, Dave, I'm a little lost, or my, this is, I'm sec, I will second the, the motion to, uh, grant the variance, and, and also add that it doesn't, um, derogate from the intent and purposes of the bylaw to grant it.
Thank you. Yeah, we didn't have an exact motion to vote, but, um, we'll clean that up. Okay. Uh, Paul, could you do that, please?
Did not hear what you said, Dave.
Okay. Uh, we didn't have the exact motion for a vote. If you could just reiterate that.
I will move to grant the, uh, request for dimensional variance as presented.
Okay. Now, Dave, if you'd give the...
Yeah, David Veach, seconds.
Okay. So, now, and, uh, okay, and voting, uh, just explain why you believe this meets the requirements for a variance. Paul?
Um, this is Paul Sample. I'm voting in the affirmative, because I do think it, uh, is creating a hardship, given the, uh, configuration of the land, and, uh, that a relief is appropriate under our zoning laws.
Dave Veach?
I, I, I'm voting in favor of granting the variance for those, for the same reason.
Okay. Dennis?
Uh, Dennis Sullivan votes affirmative, based on the same reason.
Okay. Buck?
Uh, Buck votes affirmative, based on a hardship, uh, on the applicant and the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, and is appropriate under the terms of the town bylaw.
Okay. And this is Dave Nixon, voting. I also vote in the affirmative. The, the lot is quite unique, if you ask me. Um, it's certainly not like anything, uh, the usual lots in that part of the town. So, okay, so that, I believe, was a unanimous vote, Sarah? Five-zero?
Yes, it was.
And, and thank you very much, uh, David Little.
And, and thank you all very much as well.
Okay. Take care. So, uh, Sarah, we go on to application 20-045.
Application number 20-045, Chatter Revocable Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 55 Sears Point Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map 11A1 Block 8 Lot X2. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of one existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling and detached garage with living space above. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located 15 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 15 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 4,313 square feet, 5.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 5,920 square feet, 7.6%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot, the lot contains two dwellings on 138,520 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Protective Bylaw.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Chatter, uh, Revocable Trust. Uh, we also have Allison Gregoli and Doug Dick, who are the architects, uh, that created, uh, the design, and, and, um, we'll hear from them shortly, but the, I just wanted to point out that, uh, this property was formerly owned by the Griskam family, uh, and the... family, uh, and the, uh, aided by a clever lawyer, not me, uh, they, they determined that, although they, they weren't in a position to subdivide the property, uh, they could, uh, create a condominium, which they did back in nineteen eighty-four, so that each house shown on the plan is a unit of the condominium, uh, so the, uh, the current owners of, uh, the unit we're dealing with today, uh, for historical context, are the daughters of, uh, Allison Jordan Popkin, and the great-granddaughters are Louis Brandeis, the, uh, uh, they thought, uh, it was important, uh, for them to, uh, have a structure that was suitable, basically, for three families, the existing structure, uh, was not, uh, apparently, you had to be about four foot ten to walk around upstairs, but in any event, uh, so they retained the services of, uh, Doug and, and, uh, Allison to, um, design the structure in a way that, uh, would be compatible with the existing building and the other structures, uh, there on the waterfront, and, and I think they, uh, really done a great job, uh, in that respect, the, uh, we did file a slight revision, uh, where the, and we filed those plans with, uh, Sarah, yesterday, I think, I feel bad about, but, very minor, that the west wall extends out eight inches, uh, close to the property line, and there's a new bump out on the front of the building, uh, which is, uh, essentially a laundry room inside, the, the, uh, but on, from the west side of the building to the western sideline, is still over sixty feet, uh, so, the, uh, uh, you know, there's plenty of room on this, on this piece of property, as you can, as you can tell, looking at the plan, um, the bump out on the front, essentially matches, uh, a bump out, it's on, there were bump outs on both sides of the, of the main entrance to the house, and the new bump out just, just mirrors the bump out on the, on the other side, uh, and they also, they lowered the height of the roof, uh, on the, uh, enclosed sun porch over on the, the far eastern side of the property, um, the, uh, so I'd ask, uh, Doug or, or Ally, uh, to explain the design concepts and, and, uh, how they got to this particular, uh, design.
Yeah, okay, uh, Bill, before we go with that, um, uh, Sarah, please explain why this change in the plan does not have to be re-advertized.
So, the maximum building coverage allowed for a lot of this size in this zoning district is ten percent, there is no encroachment onto, um, any setback further than what was advertised, the only increase is the building coverage, which on the new plan increases from the advertised total, and this is total, um, actually, total for the garage and house goes from, and I'm just attempting to locate this on Mr. Clark's plan, here we go, right here, um, goes from an advertised five thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet to six thousand sixty-five square feet, a percentage change of point two percent, going from seven point six to seven point eight, which is still under the ten percent that would be allowed, um, under our zoning dimensional table.
Okay, thank you, so, uh, members, uh, that's why it doesn't have to be re-advertized, uh, because of it coming under the ten percent, okay, Mr. Riley, uh, thank you for that interruption, please go forward.
All right, so I would ask, uh, Doug or Ally, uh, to go through the design, uh, process they went through with, uh, the Popkin Sisters.
Okay.
Um, sure, happy to do that, my name is Douglas Dick with LDA Architecture and Interiors, uh, uh, my last four of mine telephone is nine eight oh one, um-
Thank you.
And let me just walk you through, uh, this process, and I guess we can adjust the plans as we need to, but if we're to go back to the site plan quickly, um, I just want to point out that, um, the, the footprint of the new house, for the most part, on, uh, for most of the perimeter, follows the footprint of the existing house, the existing house, if you look at the right half of the footprint that's shown here, is, uh, two stories tall, as Bill said, the second floor has very low ceilings, as does the first, um, so both of the first and second floor ceilings are being raised, the left half of the house is currently a one-story house, and we're increasing that to a two-story house, overall, the, the ridge of the house is less than four feet taller than the existing house, so it has the appearance of a one and a half story house with dormers, um, the garage is a freestanding structure, uh, two-car garage, uh, on the, the left portion of the property, which you can see is a little, uh, uh, structure that's slightly angled, um, if we go to the exterior elevations, I can walk you through, uh, the design goals, um, yeah, we can start with this one, this is the, the entry side of the house, um, you can see the double front door, to the left of that double front door is, is, uh, the portion of the house that follows the existing footprint, and is two stories, as is the existing home, we are maintaining a one and a half story configuration with dormers, shed dormers, just like the existing house, um, to the right of the entry door is the existing house has a one-story extension and garage, and we're proposing, uh, a two-story section, um, again, it's a, a gable with the same pitch as the existing house, and similar, uh, shed dormer style, the house will be, uh, white cedar shingle with, uh, painted white trim, um, traditional double-hung windows, six-over ones, for the most part, um, a, uh, architectural asphalt single roof, and there will be a, uh, a chimney with, for a new fireplace, that will be, uh, red brick, um, other features on this facade is a one-story covered entrance, um, which also, that same entrance roof covers the, uh, mudroom and laundry on the first floor that, uh, Bill already mentioned, um, if you continue to the next elevation, um, this is the water side, uh, on the right side, uh, there, well, there are basically four big sliding glass doors that provide, uh, great views to, uh, what is a fantastic view from inside the house, um, the right three windows are, again, over the footprint of the existing house, um, on the far right, it's circled in red, is a sunroom, and that sits over the exact footprint of the existing one-story sunroom, so the, the, the scale and massing of the house is actually quite similar to the existing house, on the left side of the drawing is the, is the two-story, uh, uh, portion of the house where there's currently a one-story, um, this side also has a, um, a covered, uh, porch over the dining room, which creates a second floor deck at a second floor sitting room, um, if you want to continue, I can, uh, these are the end elevations, they just emphasize the use of the shed dormers, um, if you continue, I think we have some drawings of, this, these are the four sides of the garage, which is a two-car garage, um, two garage doors, there's a, a person door that leads into the garage, and to a set of stairs going up to, uh, a second floor that has a bedroom and an office space in it, um, again, same architectural style, same, uh, roof pitch that the existing house has, and, and we followed through utilizing the shed dormer, uh, for the second floor, um, I think our goal was to, was to do a house that, uh, that maintains some of the aesthetics of the existing house, uh, with the, the white cedar shingles and painted white trim, um, and, and also the scale and similar detailing, uh, so it should, it's, the goal was to make it fit into, uh, as best we could, with a slightly taller structure, uh, the aesthetic and scale of the existing home and neighboring houses. Allison, if I've thought, if I've missed something, please, uh, jump in. I think we've hit the high points.
Yeah, we're good, unless, uh, Allison would have to unmute herself to, to join in, but, uh, I think that's good, though, let me, uh, unless the, um, the board members have questions they'd like to ask of, of Doug or Allison, at this point, I, I'd like to go through the criteria, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please do.
Okay, so adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use, uh, as Doug pointed out, uh, you know, the, uh, the, using virtually the exact same footprint for the main house, and to the extent that there's expansion, as you can see on the site plan, they expand away from the water, the, uh, the garage clearly is new, uh, but the, uh, the, you know, we meet all the setbacks, in fact, we're, the house is, you know, sixty feet from the, the, uh, western boundary, and over a hundred feet from the eastern boundary, uh, we're over a hundred feet from the top of the coastal bank, however, you know, because of the topography and the flood plain, uh, the, uh, slight changing grade in the lawn, uh, creates another coastal bank, so, uh, that's why we're non-conforming, because we, we're not fifty feet away from that, the, uh, and even with the increase in the size, including the new garage, our lot coverage is still only seven point eight percent, uh, so, uh, we, we think, uh, the size of the site's adequate for the proposal. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, uh, since the property's not visible from the street, uh, in fact, it's not visible from really anywhere, if you've been out there, you, you're pretty much all alone, uh, but it is visible from the water, and, and so we, we thought, uh, that was important, and if you think about, uh, how the, how the, how the houses are, uh, on the waterside here, we have, um, the, uh, the rather large rebuilt, um, home, uh, where the, you know, uh, David Rogers now lives, and, and to the east of that, you have, uh, uh, kind of a, this currently a rather large home going up, uh, so that, uh, this house is very modest in size compared to those two structures, if you move, uh, to the west, uh, we have an older home, uh, belongs to one of the longest-standing families in Chatham, uh, the, the Eckers, uh, and the next property around the corner there, on the Oyster River is, is McClay, and then the homes, as they go down the Oyster River, start to get larger again, so, we think that, um, uh, we're very much compatible as a, sort of a transition between the very large homes to the east, and the more modest homes, uh, to the west, uh, the extent of the proposed increase in non-conforming nature, uh, I thought we had a lot of, uh, increases, but I think the only one, uh, as I studied, I think the only increase is the, we have greater living space, uh, in the proposed main structure, uh, suitability of the site, including without limited to impact on neighboring properties, or on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff, uh, if you've been to the site, you know, uh, that it's, uh, quite level, uh, you know, there is, it does, uh, go down a little bit in elevation on the east side, uh, and, and because that's technically classified as the top of a coastal bank, uh, we'll be protecting that, we, we're currently in front of the Conservation Commission, and the, uh, we're actually scheduled to appear before them yesterday, and the, uh, the team felt that, uh, because of the very lengthy agenda the Conservation Commission had yesterday, they had like fifteen matters on, or so, uh, that we wouldn't be able to be reached, and so rather than, um, have the project continue to a date, uh, not of our choosing, uh, a request was sent in by our engineer requesting it continuous to September, uh, ninth, uh, which is, you know, a day we know will be reached, well, it turns out, and this is kudos to the Conservation Commission, they went through all fifteen matters yesterday, and if we hadn't requested the continuance, you know, we, we would have been able to do our presentation to the Conservation Commission, uh, in any event, uh, as you can tell, you know, there's no, uh, significant, uh, wetland in the area, uh, there's no vegetated wetland, um, we just have the, uh, you know, the, the, you know, the Coastal Conservancy District, because of the way the flood, uh, plane comes in, uh, and so presumably, there could be, you know, uh, storm flow at some, at some future date, uh, there hasn't been any, uh, recently, uh, so we don't think there are any significant conservation issues, and we believe the construction can be done without harming, uh, either the adjacent properties, uh, or the, uh, or any of the flood plain, the, um, in terms of impact of scale, signing, and mass on the neighborhood visual character, uh, we think, uh, that Doug and Allison have done a great job, uh, mimicking the design of the existing home, uh, windows are bigger, which is, able to take advantage of that great view, but the, uh, we think that not only is there not a negative impact on views, visits, and streetscapes, but we believe that the, that the house constitutes an improvement, and it's clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, uh, by way of, uh, sort of a little bit of a footnote, because of the age of the structure, we had to go to the Historical Commission, uh, and they determined, uh, that there was no historical significance, uh, to the structure, and, and, uh, so they, uh, they, they decided they had no jurisdiction over it, which caught us by surprise, to tell you the truth, um, in any event, the, uh, compatibility of proposed use with neighboring uses, the, uh, you know, the single-family residence, and the single-family neighborhood, um, we're creating a, a brand-new, uh, septic system, uh, for the, for the property, right now, it's on cesspools, and it's classified as a seven-bedroom home, and, uh, we're replacing the, uh, uh, that with a five-bedroom home, we are putting, uh, another bedroom in the, in the garage, uh, so we're actually going to have less, uh, discharge into the groundwater, uh, no impact on traffic flow and safety, and, uh, so, so we believe that, uh, because it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, that, uh, you have the ability to grant a special permit, that'll be our presentation, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley, is there anyone out there who would like to speak in favor of this project, if so, please indicate, uh, to Sarah that you would like to speak.
I'm not seeing anyone that would like to speak in favor.
Okay, so I'll read the correspondence, the first is from, uh, the Historical Commission, "The applicant was before the Historical Commission on June sixteenth, twenty twenty, for the review, for the full demolition of the existing structure, it was determined by the commission that the structure is not historically significant, and therefore, no demolition delay was imposed," and that was from Michelle Clark, then we have a note from Juths Giorgio, uh- Then we have a note from Judith Giorgio, Chatham Board of Health. She writes on 8/21, "I have reviewed the proposed plan. The site is large enough for the proposed five-bedroom dwelling and two-bedroom ADU. The septic system will require an upgrade and, to include a new septic tank and distribution box, a septic plan and permit application will be required to be submitted for review by the Health Division." Sarah, was Judith a little confused because she's referring to the two-bedroom ADU, and I thought that that was a garage?
I believe so, and I believe Mr. Riley will address that.
Okay.
Yeah, we have not requested an additional dwelling within the meaning of the Chatham zoning bylaw. Apparently, Judith thought we were, but there are no cooking facilities in the garage. She classifies it as two bedrooms, because one's going to be an office, and just the way they define bedrooms, you know, that would be classified as, you know, the office would be classified as a bedroom, but it was clearly not an ADU, and we haven't sought permission to happen at an ADU.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Then we have a note dated today, it's from the Conservation Agent Callie Harper. "After reviewing the ZBA agenda for the above date, I have compiled the following comments. 55 Sears Point Road, proposed demolition of the existing dwelling, construction of a new dwelling, installation of mitigation plans. The commission continued the hearing to September 9th, 2020, at the applicant's request." And I think Mr. Riley previously went through what happened and the reason for that. So, that is the extent of the correspondence. I would ask now for anyone who wishes to speak against this or has a specific question to so indicate to Sarah that you would like to speak.
I'm not seeing anyone that would like, has a specific question or wishes to speak in opposition.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go to questions from the board. Dennis?
Um, yeah, I just have one question for Bill. I assume the condo docs require the other unit owner to approve these plans, and I was wondering if they have.
Yes, the other unit owner, there's a gentleman named Tim, Timothy Daley. He's actually a member of the Griscum family that formerly owned the property, and the, not only did he approve these plans, he approved a modification or an amendment of the condominium documents, so that we actually don't require their approval. But we did submit, we did submit the plans, so he was very pleased with the design, and, you know, my clients really look forward to having a great relationship with Mr. Daley and his family.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Paul?
Yes, this is Paul Sample. You answered my question about bedrooms actually in the garage, because I think one of the plans we had showed two bedrooms, but I guess one of them is going to be an office. The only other question I had is, maybe you can educate me, or maybe it's a typo, but between the dining room and the master bedroom, there's a library. What is a library?
This is Doug Dick. I can answer that question. We actually pronounce it flibbery, and it is kind of a, is a room that developed as first a typo, but we decided we liked the name. It's a formal library, and we call it a flibbery. So, there you go. A new architectural term.
Ah, very interesting. Okay, well, continue my education in the process of the ZBA. That's your only question, Diane.
Dave Beach?
Yeah, I, Dave Beach has no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Megan?
Despite my being a little jealous and wanting a flibbery, I have no questions.
Oh, well, it's not too late, Megan. You can get one. Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson has no questions.
And I, Dave Nixon, have no questions either. Okay, Paul?
This is Paul Sample. I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, we'll vote on that. Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Buck?
Upson votes yes.
And I, Dave Nixon, also vote yes. Okay, deliberations. Let's start with Buck.
Well, looks like a beautiful improvement, and I would support.
Okay, Megan?
If I were voting, which I am not, I would, I would vote affirmative.
Dave Thompson?
I would vote affirmative also, and now, after listening here, three families, that explains three master suites. Neat.
Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan would vote affirmatively. It's a nice project, it certainly meets all our requirements.
Paul?
Yes, this is Paul Sample. This is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's a great location, a great project, and I will support it.
And Dave Beach?
Yes, I will support it as well, and comment that it's a really honors the building that's there, and improves it in many ways to be congratulated.
Yes, and I, Dave Nixon, also would agree, and I think the fact that Conservation wasn't able to handle this yesterday is too bad, but I see no reason for us to not go forward with our vote. Okay, before we go on to a motion from you, Paul, on the vote, a discussion, please, of conditions. Dennis, are there any conditions you believe should be imposed on this?
Um, not, I think just the, just the, oops, excuse me, just the standard conditions. I mean, there's plenty of room on the lot. It's a little tough to get in there, but once you're there, there's lots of room, so I think the standard conditions are fine.
Okay, so that would be all construction activity and vehicles to be contained on the site between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Here we are, probably sort of in the middle of nowhere. Why would we have a limitation on construction, outside construction in the summertime?
I guess because of the noise factor. Didn't you just state you wanted to be a good guy and to your condominium neighbor?
Yeah, well, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary in this location.
Okay, well, we'll go through and see what the members think. So, Dennis, you believe yes as far as these conditions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Paul, how about you?
Well, I, I can't imagine that the noise of construction is going to affect neighbors here, other than the one neighbor who was a part of the condominium group. I don't know whether this could be heard from the Deckers, the Eckers, rather, and that would be of some concern if it was an issue, but generally speaking, we're talking about a small neighborhood. I think if we contain the construction vehicles on site, then that should be sufficient.
You don't feel that it should be, no work should be permitted on weekends in the summer?
No, I do, I do agree with that. I didn't mean to eliminate those concepts, but Mr. Riley's objection, I think, has some merit to it.
Okay, so you're only talking about the exterior construction could be allowed?
Correct.
That's what you're saying. Yeah, okay. Dave Beach?
Yes, I'm in agreement with Paul on this. I don't, I think, I don't think we want to ban exterior construction during, during the summer in this location. It's pretty, pretty isolated in many respects. And the other, the other thing that I would suggest, and perhaps Sarah's doing this automatically, is to tack onto the end of the point about construction activity and vehicles, but also allowing on other properties with the consent of the owners. So, but no, the, no work on weekends in the summer or the, between eight and five, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Buck?
Well, I am apt to support the applicant's representative's request, but I guess I'm in the minority.
And in other words, you support the idea of no exterior construction would, can be allowed. Exterior construction can be allowed, not no.
Well, in plain English, I could support no special conditions, but.
Oh, at all? Okay.
At all.
All right. Megan, how about yourself on conditions?
I tend to agree with Buck. I think in this particular instance, if I were voting, I would not support restrictions, I suppose, short of weekends, but I certainly don't think we need any summer restrictions on this.
Okay, Dave Thompson?
I kind of go along with Buck on this one. Mr. Nixon?
Okay. Okay, so, well, we have a.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, what I would propose for conditions would be all vehicles maintained, all construction vehicles maintained on our property or on adjacent properties where we have permission. No exterior construction on weekends from June 30th to Labor Day, and other than that, that would be it for restrictions.
How about the hours, the construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m.?
Okay, yeah, we can live with that.
Okay. Okay, so hearing that, are there any members that feel that that isn't acceptable to them? And I'll just quickly run through, Dennis, to say yes or no.
No, that's agreeable.
All right, Paul?
I think those conditions are appropriate.
Dave Beach?
Agreed.
Buck?
I agree.
Megan?
Agreed.
Dave Thompson?
Agreed.
Okay, and I agree.
All right. This is, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that we have gestated.
Okay, Sarah, is there any confusion on your part?
I just wanted to make sure, I heard Attorney Riley, and it may have been the deluge of rain that's going on outside, no exterior construction on the weekends, not our traditional no construction on weekends. That's what I thought I heard him say, and I just wanted to make sure that in drafting the decision letter, that is what was said.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, Sarah, if I'm wrong, the conditions would be all construction activity and vehicles to be contained on the site or on adjacent property if okay with neighbors, and then between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction permitted on the weekends.
And then eight to five only on the weekends.
Right, and construction activity between.
Or just general.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Okay, that's, I just wanted confirmation. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, Paul?
David Beach seconds the motion.
Very good. Now, I will vote. Dennis?
Affirmative.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Buck?
Upson votes yes.
And Dave Nixon votes yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Riley. Great project, wonderful.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help today.
Okay, so, do we, other business, do we have any minutes to approve, Sarah?
We have the minutes of August 13th.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion about those minutes?
This is, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the minutes of August 13th as submitted.
David Beach second.
Okay, and the roll call on that, Dennis?
Sullivan votes affirmative.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Buck?
Upson votes yes.
And Dave Nixon votes yes. Okay, I think unless somebody else has some other business to bring in front of us, if so, please speak. If not, what time is it, Sarah?
It is 4:00.
All right, then we are out of here. Thank you all, and.
But we do need a roll call to get out of the meeting, David.
Okay. Where's my roll call? Okay, Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Buck?
Upson votes yes.
Okay, and we go through everybody on this. Megan?
Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't think you were going to call on me.
Well, now, these roll calls, everybody's in the roll call. Dave Thompson?
Yes, sir.
And Dave Nixon says yes also. And with that, goodbye.
We're adjourned at 4:01 p.m.
All right, take care of everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.